This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, January 10th. Please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Eric Zubler, Christ Church Cathedral, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence following the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, this city of Mobile and all cities of the earth. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity. Through Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
Good morning. Moment of silence for Dr. Linda Carroll. She passed on Sunday evening. She was a retired assistant superintendent from Mobile Colony Public School System and former board president of the Boys and Girls Club, active in her community throughout her life. We want to just take this moment for a moment of silence and please keep her family and her friends in your prayers.
Roll call, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Statement of rule.
Hey, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone. At our meeting, we welcome everyone to our January 10th meeting. And at this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone has any type of electronic device, please at this time put on the off or the vibratory position, off of the vibratory position. Any person desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution of ordinance, appeal, a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person desiring to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the City Clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to address must be identified and obtained at the City of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the City Clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. These speakers allow three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain summarizing. Second bell indicates that the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no person to address to any individual council member. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no honor to applause and a public outcry allowed. Madam City Clerk?
Approval of minutes of January the 3rd.
Six.
May I prompt the move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see everybody. Several things going on this weekend. First, we want to talk about is Art Walk. This Friday at Art Walk, we'll be celebrating International Lego Day. So from 6:00 to 9:00, we'll have children and adults that have opportunity to share their creativity and joy that they have with Legos. We'll be watching the Lego Movie in Cathedral Square at sundown, and there'll be Lego giveaways, music, and more. So if you're so inclined to want to be part of the Lego fun, show up at Cathedral Square. For those who are looking for something to do on Saturday night, we'll be lighting the Mighty Grohl Tree, and that will be from 5:30 to 6:30 in Mighty Grohl Park. And we'll be hearing from the Jukebox Brass Band for that event. And then we'll have a second line going from there to Cooper Riverside Park, and it'll be the first night of Saturdays at the Coop. We'll be kicking that off, but that starts from at 7:00 to 10:00 PM Saturday night. So depending on the weather, bring your chair and your blanket, and hopefully not your umbrella. We look forward to having fun there. As you know, as you drive around the city of Mobile, there are a lot of orange cones because of all the resurfacing, the rebuilding, and projects that are going on. One that's going to be a little bit disruptive has to do with the rebuilding of McGregor Avenue between O'Sheel and Spring Hill Avenue. It'll be broken into two phases. The entire project will probably take 12 months. There have been detour routes already published. The businesses that are along that corridor will remain open, and we'll do everything we can to make sure that their customers can still get to those businesses. Again, that's from O'Sheel Road to Spring Hill Avenue, and the rebuilding is of McGregor Avenue. The first phase actually starts at the Roundabout. Matter of fact, it doesn't go all the way to Spring Hill Avenue. Nick, is that right? It goes to the Roundabout? Yeah, I misspoke. The rebuilding goes from O'Sheel Road to the Roundabout where the new fire station is. And that will be broken into two phases so that the businesses can remain open and the citizens can get to their houses. But anyway, we will be making sure that all those that frequent that area, they know the alternative routes for getting around. At this time, I'd call on Shonda Smith to introduce our Public Works Employees of the Month. Smith?
Good morning. Happy New Year. We are again for our Employee of the Month for Public Works at Large, Parks and Recreation, and we also have Public Services. Again, these participants are selected by their peers to be Employee of the Month every month, and then there's engagement that selects who they are. So it's always an honor to be selected by your peers. The first, I'm agreeing. Public Works at Large down to announce.
Good morning. Ryan Smith is a recipient for the Public Works at Large group. He works in the Environmental Engineering Department, and he has many challenges due to Mobile's complicated ecosystem and environment and its infrastructure. He has been doing the work of three people due to vacancies in our department. Stormwater management responsibilities were added to his duties in addition to training a new staff member while keeping up with monthly stormwater permitting inspections for the Mobile Airport Authority and Airbus project. Ryan is always professional, respectful, and has a smile on his face. He's a team player who focuses on accuracy and safety both in the field and in the office. His earned the respect of his coworkers and city employees outside his department. Ryan has recently been promoted to project manager. Ryan has managed both of the city's household hazardous waste collection events. These events required contracts with a vendor, logistical coordination, Parks and Rec, traffic engineering, Mobile Police, and equipment services departments. These required publicizing the events with the communications department, as well as creating a registration webpage on the city's main webpage. And Ryan made day of the event adjustments on both of these events. Ryan is an asset to our department and to the city, and we appreciate all his efforts.
Next, we will have Parks and Recreation.
Good morning. I present Ms. Kathy Hankins today, and Kathy handles all the purchasing, well, Kathy handles purchasing for our entire department and goes the extra mile to get things done. She has a personal relationship with each vendor, and Kathy also doesn't take the mind to train others and make sure they understand what they're doing. Kathy's a joy and asset to our department, and I'm glad to call her not only a coworker, but a friend.
And last, we have Public Services.
Brittany Dunn initially came to the city of Mobile as a community service worker in October 2018. She worked in that capacity for a little while, for a little bit over two months. Mrs. May, the litter and recycling supervisor, was so impressed with her work ethic that she offered Brittany a permanent position. She became a permanent employee in July of 2019. She worked very hard to learn the duties, responsibilities, and procedures of litter and recycling department. She was promoted to PSW-2 in 2021, and she obtained her CDL license in December of 2021. She is the lead in the litter and recycling department, assisting Mrs. May with managing crews, performing facility inspections, and abating oil spills. She's honest, dependable, humble, dedicated, and hardworking.
Thank you. That concludes it.
Mr. President, if I might, while Ms. Smith is at the podium, I just want to also recognize the mowing crew that works within Public Works. They have done a terrific job out on Ziegler Boulevard, which is a true challenge with all the widening work that's going on. It's difficult to get in and out of those cones, so just thank you for everything you have done out there. The mowing looks great, and everybody really appreciates it.
Good morning. Had I have an opportunity to offer a proclamation today, it means a lot to me. Before, of course, I took the role as a city councilman, I was a student pastor for 10 years. So I used to go to this event on a regular basis, and they have done so much for our city. And so today, whereas we would like to announce its return in the City of Mobile Winter Jam, one of the largest annual music events in the country and the largest annual tour in the world. And whereas we welcome all of its hard-working performers, dedicated staff, that will grace our wonderful city and bless the host this inspirational event. Whereas, Winter Jam will take place on January 14th at 6:00 PM at the Mobile Civic Center with a pre-show beginning at 5:00 PM. And whereas for years, this event has been held at the U.S. Mitchell Center, and we are excited to see it return to downtown Mobile. And whereas this year, musical talent will feature national, international recognized acts such as We the Kingdom, Jeremy Camp, Andy Mineo, Annie Wilson, Disciples, Austin French, Zane Black, Thrive Workshop, Sean B., Renee, and of course, its founders, Nusong. And whereas Nusong founded Winter Jam in 1995 on the premise of providing an incredible evening of live concerts with top Christian artists worship ministries, and it's also being time of encouragement for believers, sharing in the good news of Christ. And whereas, Winter Jam was designed on the basis of removing cost barriers so more people can hear the gospel and years later, though still its foundation. Whereas, tickets for Winter Jam 2023 may be purchased on the foundation website just for $15. Now therefore, Corey Penn, council member of District 1, along with the members of the Mobile City Council, due hereby January 14th, 2023, proclaim as Winter Jam Day in Mobile, and urge all citizens to welcome with open arms the entertainer and staff providing this moving experience. Do we have representatives? Thank you, Ryan, for coming down.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. Ryan Foster with ASM Global Mobile, 1 South Water Street. Accepting on behalf of Premier Productions, who puts on Winter Jam, they say, quote, "Thank you to the city council and the city of Mobile. It's always a joy and honor to be back in Mobile for Winter Jam year after year." Winter Jam has been coming to Mobile since 2002, and each year, it's beautiful to see the entire community come together to worship. We're so excited to celebrate Winter Jam this Saturday, January 14th. We hope to see you all this weekend at the Mobile Civic Center. Thank you.
Those are some terrific groups. I mean, what a great, what a great place to bring everybody and those wonderful entertainers. So thank you for all of that.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second.
May I prompt the move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda's adopted.
We have requests, we have appeals, request for wave of the noise ordinance on January 16th on Conti Street and March 11th at Navco Park.
Some move.
May I prompt the move in second and in discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Phil Pass.
Public hearing. Today is a public hearing to rezone property located at 3516 and 3526 Halls Mill Road from R1 to I1.
Let's open up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council? You may do so by coming down to the podium and stating your name and your address at this time. Is anyone present? If not, this particular public hearing is closed.
Today is the public hearing to declare the structures at 2411 Noble C. Beasley Avenue, 404 Dunham Street, 1003B Houston Street, 5064 Range Line Road, and 730 Bankhead Place, a public nuisance and ordering them demolished.
Is anyone present that would like to address the council on these particular said items? If so, you may come down to the podium by stating your name and your address.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Margie Bush. I didn't understand the question previously. I'm here about 2411 Noble C. Beasley in Mobile.
Yes, give us your full name and your address. I'm sorry.
Margie Bush, 672 Stanton Road, Mobile, Alabama, 36617.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm the oldest of the, both deceased property owners, and there is a plan in place to go ahead and demolish that structure. I've been in contact with the contractor, several, and work should begin within 30 days after this week.
Okay. Mr. Up here.
That's fine. I just, um, just saw Mr. David Docma, and he said that's, that's okay. And we can do that.
All right, thank you. Table.
Lay it over.
Table.
Good morning, council. I'm for 404 Dunham Street. Name is Chuck Kirk. I'm at 1802 Heritage Drive in Gulf Shores, Alabama, just relocated there. I'm new here from transitioning from Ohio. So when you look at the data on this house, Get Mad actually stands for Great Enough to Make a Difference. It's not a, I'm not an investor. I'm not flipping houses. I'm super excited to be here. I have a gamut of houses mixed in various districts. What I do is, Get Mad is actually an extension of treatment. Once people leave treatment centers, they actually, we try to buffer that step so they don't go home and relapse immediately, which is a common trait in the recovery world. We buffer that step. We make a nice residential house available. It's voluntary living, no grants, no funding. It's self-pay. And had 140 residents in Ohio and 20, and actually 32 houses. We put together a cafe, all kinds of stuff to make it an actual, like, community. So I don't like three-quarter house. It's not, you know, we, we call it a sober living community, and we have, like, volleyball teams and all this stuff. But anyway, I apologize for the delay. I've been all over Alabama. God's been moving me from one side of this bay to the other. I actually secured 1909 Government Street. It's a beautiful home, which I'm hoping to make my actual hub for here in the Mobile campus. So I'm going to have a few campuses that he's laid on my heart, and I'm really excited because Mobile is a great climate. It's all year round. So I just wanted you to know, I'm not a flipper. I'm not, like, looking to do that. But Dunham Street has a lot of character, has a lot of benefits. I unfortunately don't have $30,000 to go drop down on it today when you own almost 30 units now. So I'm trying to formulate my plan of attack, formulate how I can make Mobile an awesome place. We're community-driven, so we pick up trash when we're in a community. Again, it's voluntary living, doesn't cost anybody but the residents their, their time. So we pick up trash, we improve the community. It helps actually prevent crime because we're in the area, we're familiar with what's going on around that shouldn't be going on. So it's, it's a neat thing, and I, again, apologize for the delay, but I do need some time to try to get my plan of attack together, and I don't want my house torn down.
I wonder if it would be possible for you to secure and address the outside, prevent any problems that would happen? Before I make a decision, do you have a way to do that at all?
I actually, I'm working with Mr. Williams. Already went over, and I took the entire porch off. We made some improvements that we thought would make him happy to secure it. He just didn't like the back of, because I was trying to get a game plan and connect with him, like, how can I secure the back? He's an awesome inspector. He's been supportive all along. To me, he's worked with me on different houses so far. So again, with the pandemic, you know, plywood went to 30, 50, $70 a sheet. It's just impossible, guys, to just go run out and, you know what I mean? But I feel like it's starting to come back. I feel like I'm there.
The front of that house doesn't look very bad at all.
Yeah, I tore the porch off already, and I got all of this stuff that could, you know, fall or whatever. That's all been removed. We cleaned up the sides. We cut the trees back. I cut the tree that was kind of on the roof. I'm trying to get a roof plan so I can get it under roof and then repair the rotten wood and then begin to primer paint it and then work my way from the outside in.
What's your construction schedule like?
I'm really hoping, honestly, and I'm praying hard, I really am, because I want to get this campus going over here. I love Mobile. It, I want to, I'm hoping within the next 90 days, when spring, you know, around March, by the end of March, I want to be back to that, back to that house.
Yeah, but with the look of the property, you're going to need an architect involved also. Have you secured an architect already?
Oh, I was going to pull my, I was going to try to work on my own permit and drawings. Can I not do that here?
Not with the structural requirements that that house has. You're going to have to have somebody sign off on it.
Okay.
So have you done any of that?
No, I'll have to research someone that might support me. You talking about because of the roof?
Right, well, the code changed 30 days ago, right? Code just changed, and it requires, it requires that specific issue for structural cause. It used to be that the owner could actually do his own drawing or his own floor plan and elevation for an addition or repair, but it's changed just a little bit. So I don't know if you fall within the allowable requirements. The best thing to do is to talk to this guy that's standing behind you named David Docma.
This guy? I heard about Dave.
And let him, based on what you've done, give me a recommendation, David, if you don't mind. You know, the house is, the house is in a campground, right? Where's, what's, that house is in the campground?
My, I've never heard of that.
Where's that house?
It's next to the cemetery. It's right by the cemetery. It, the, the Dunham dead ends into that cemetery, that, that historical cemetery right there. It's off, off Texas and Dunham's back there.
That's frustrating. I know where, where you are now. Yeah, I'm with you. That's in Oakley. I couldn't remember which historic district that was in. Yellow House, M22, front, is the one you're talking about?
Yeah, the porch, it had the porch, the columns were, yeah.
It's also in a historic district where we hate to have houses torn down, so I'm...
Thank you, Jesus.
I'm willing to work with you as best we can.
Thank you.
Please get with David, let him give me a recommendation before we get to it on the agenda, David, if you could.
As you heard before, there, there is active construction going on site, but what I need from the property owner is a timeline, a scope of project, but also building permits. Right now, we don't have any active building permits, and you hit the nail right on the head. He's got to get those permits issued and then continue the repair work. But at this point, that's, that's what I'm looking for. Construction maintenance plan with estimated timelines like we discussed already, and then the active building permit to get, to get going.
You...
And 60-day holdover would be great, and we can be effective after that.
Okay. 60 days? And you will need a permit and start the process with whatever architectural needs you need, and come back before, so we'll make another determination at that time.
Okay. Great. Thank you, guys, for your time. I appreciate it.
Is anyone else present that would like to address the council on these particular said properties? If not, these public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Greg Lockland.
Good morning.
Morning.
I wrote down because I'd forget if I didn't. I apologize for reading. My name is Greg Lockland. I'm the owner of Saddle Up Saloon Downtown. I've been open for 11 years, and I thank you for the opportunity to address you about the current situation in the entertainment district. First, there are not nearly enough police. On any given Friday or Saturday, one can walk down one end of Dolphin Street to the other and not encountering any police officers. When the entertainment district was first established, we had officers walking the beat, on segways, on horseback, and in cars. That's what you need to patrol, a large 10-block area where you're inviting thousands of people to come down and enjoy nightlife activities. That's what happens in any other entertainment district of Bill Street in Memphis or Bourbon on, on, in New Orleans. The police chief recently said in a meeting he is 70 officers short and losing officers to other jurisdictions with higher pay. During Art Walk, there are plenty of officers. When I asked the chief why they disappeared at 9:00 PM, he says because they are paid by Parks and Recreation budget. Well, that's good, but the security that the city provides for Art Walk is exactly the level of protection we need for the entertainment district to be safe after 9:00 PM. Secondly, the entertainment district was designed to allow customers of one business to stroll to the next while finishing the drinks they purchase. That is no longer what happens. The crowds on Dolphin Street now bring their own alcohol, play their own music, smoke pot, form congested groups of people we now know, unfortunately are infiltrated by street gangs. This crowd congregates in such a way that makes it difficult and intimidating for tourists to pass. We need to end the uncontrolled block parties. Let's get people out of the street and into the club where there is security and open the streets to traffic. Then shorten the hours of the entertainment district from midnight to 9:00 PM. No drinking on the streets after 9:00 PM. Mighty Grohl parades are over by 9:00 PM, and Art Walk is over by 9:00 PM as well. Lastly, and this is against everything I've talked to people about, I don't want to talk about minors in clubs. I want to talk about 19 and 20-year-olds off the streets as well. Underage 18 and below, that the police are doing as well as they can to get them off the streets for curfew. We can get the over 21 that are just drinking their own drinks in the street and being crazy into the club. The council in 2012 or so passed an ordinance that says only businesses in which 50% of the revenue is comprised of food. In other words, restaurants. fifty percent of the revenue is comprised of food, in other words, restaurants, can allow patrons under the age of twenty-one, over nineteen, inside. I get the idea, I used to support that ordinance too, but the city has never enforced that ordinance other than downtown. When I bring this up, the response is, "But Greg, this is a college town, they have to have somewhere to go," and I don't disagree. The fact is, other college towns recognize this and allow nineteen to dance and twenty-one to drink. The reason the city doesn't want to enforce the law other than downtown is exactly because college students do need a place to go and are safer inside with security than the unpatrolled streets and parking lots of the city. If you support not enforcing this ordinance in West Mobile, then do the same for downtown for the same reason. Is that me? I doubt many clubs will allow nineteen and twenty-year-olds.
Uh, I, uh, yeah, that's your three minutes, but I'm, I'm gonna grant you one more, one more minute.
I doubt many clubs will allow nineteen and twenty, and some will, and they will provide better and more secure environment than the parking lots and side streets of the entertainment district. And that's all I have to say. Is, and the questions are coming from the council? Anything from the public safety director?
Mr. President?
Uh, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, just a general statement. I mean, I've, I've looked at a lot of comments on social media about this city and, and the concerns that are being addressed by the public and with regards to coming up to Mardi Gras and downtown, and, and I do think there, now is a time to have these discussions. And, and I appreciate you coming down, making your thoughts known, I would, I would like to see these talks become formal and, and, you know, get more business owners involved in these discussions with Director Batiste and, you know, let, let's figure this thing out. Because if, if, if this event displays itself again and, and plays itself out in the short term, we're gonna have significant challenges as we talk about economic development and growth. And I think it's something that we have got to prioritize in this city, because perception is reality. And, and we can sit there and, you know, and the re- reality is this, there, there was a cop in very near proximity to where the shooting actually took place, and somebody with the intent to carry out that action, it doesn't matter if we had two hundred police there. And, and that becomes problematic, so how, how do we get after that? I don't have the answers and solutions, but I, I think if we have the open discussion in, in form and, and try and figure this thing out, and let people have a voice to bring their thoughts and opinions and ideas forward collectively, this is a city issue, and, and a lot of people have opinions and thoughts and ideas. And I think, and, you know, we need to listen to what they're saying, and we, we've got Mardi Gras coming up, we've got a major concert coming up. You know, that, it puts us, the opportunity is there for us to have more issues. And I, I don't envy your position, I've been dealing with security for thirty years, and I wouldn't wanna be in your shoes on the opening night of, of Mardi Gras. As it's a tough environment to try and, and you can't police yourself out of this. We've gotta have community involvement. We, we've, if, you know, we keep saying if you see something, say something, and we've got people out there that hear it, and they don't wanna say anything. Um, we, we've gotta figure our way through this, because all of the great things we're doing in this city will be undermined with this if we can't get a solution to it.
Madam Clerk?
Reggie Hill?
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and, uh, first time down, so Happy New Year to everyone. Uh, Reggie Hill, one thousand seven, uh, Center Street, arrives today to adjust, to address, um, the A.R.P. funds for the housing crisis that is within the city of Mobile, uh, the public safety crisis that is in the city of Mobile, and the careless spending crisis that is in the city of Mobile. Um, I'm actually gonna start with the careless spending portion, seeing that two of the speakers that have come down today already addressed the housing and public safety crises. Uh, so let's, let's look at that, and we have examples on today's agenda as well with zero eight dash zero three eight, as well as two one dash zero twenty-two. Now, I am a very festive person, um, I, I do not, uh, shoot down on celebration, but nearly twenty thousand dollars for some moon pies and trinkets, and there are, uh, entities that have not even received a thousand dollars that has been approved, which will be two years ago, uh, next month. As well, we see a lot of other entities who have data proven solutions to improve the quality of IP in the city of Mobile, and yet they have no support from the city. So I believe that we're gonna have that level of enthusiasm to throw some moon pies and trinkets, nearly twenty thousand dollars. I'm sure that we can find ways to put resources in place with things that actually matter for the citizens of Mobile. And then we look at this two one dash zero two two, eighty thousand dollars. I don't understand what is the point of ordinance is when we, uh, design these boards and commissions and these entities that are supposed to represent who we are. What does the legislation, the policy, or the literature say within it? Why do we need to continuously go out and search for people to tell us what to do with stuff that we created? Yet again, eighty thousand dollars, eighty thousand, and it wouldn't, it, it's not with our surplus and how large the city is, it's not that these numbers are extremely large, but it's the idea that we're spending this amount on these matters and ignoring the things that actually matter to us, the public, the taxpayers. I can see as well as if we were bringing in resources for matters amongst ourselves. The primary source of our funding here is tax-based. We are a tax-based city, sales tax at that. So the people who actually contribute the most to not only your salaries, but how the city functions are being completely ignored. Now, let's look at this A.R.P. piece, that was a quick two minutes, too. Uh, let's look at this A.R.P. piece. We have not seen anything come forth. Uh, Mr. Carroll before has requested some information from, uh, people in the executive branch, I don't know if that's been relayed, or if anything has been shared, I know nothing has been presented publicly, but we have millions of dollars sitting around, and there is a housing crisis, of course, with a hundred and eighty seconds, we can't get into all of that, so we have to continuously keep coming down, and maybe that's something we can take up in Rules Committee, add the additional one twenty back, if we see this is not advantageous for the group, uh, and then we can actually discuss this. But we have Boykin Towers, we have all these places that could be easily renovated, we have dilapidated homes in these communities that could take minimal resources and improve them. It's simple stuff that we could do that we're not doing, so of course, we'll be back to readdress this again. Happy New Year.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. Madam Clerk?
Sabrina Mas regarding Resolution twenty-one zero two-two. Good morning, Happy New Year. Um, good morning to the mayor's, um, staff, um, Ms. Lambert and her staff and the city council representatives. I, um, also am coming in concern with, um, what Mr. Hill just asked about, um, the two one dash zero two-two, um, eighty thousand dollars being on a, um, consultation and review of the boards. I'm not really sure what, what that entails, I'm really here to ask, can someone tell me what, what the review is about, what, what is the point, and what would be the, um, what are the end results expected to be? Um, if you have s- of city boards and commissions, why not go to the people that are on the city board and the commissions to ask them what it is they do, what, what are their concerns, what can they do better? Um, I, I'm not really understanding the eighty thousand dollars to be sent to, um, a group to, to, what, what, what is the point? What is the study about? What, what are, um, are the expectations? Can I, can I please get an answer to that?
Uh, Ms. Mas, um, I will be glad, after council meeting, to explain all that to you, uh, after council meeting.
So the citizens don't have a right to know that?
At the council meeting, I would be glad to explain all of it to you at the council meeting, it's not a question to answer here at this particular time, but out, soon as after council meeting, I'll be glad to explain that to you.
Okay, that's fine, but I would like for the citizens to know as well.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Mr. Carroll?
Can I give her, uh?
Yes.
Fifteen-second answer here?
Yes, sir.
Um, Ms. Mas, there are some boards that we have in the city that are dysfunctional because we have some appointees that do not show, do not come, are ineffective, and then, uh, we have some boards that have out, operated on the statute since the day of their inception, uh, where there, uh, needs to be some, uh, best practices put in place. This is simply a way of reviewing our processes to see what our best practices should, should be to implement new tools and regulations to our boards so that we can get the most efficiency out of them. Uh, there are some boards, which you know of, where we have members that we can't replace because of the way the statute is currently written, where we need people on the boards 'cause they don't show. So we're taking a look at every board that we have, uh, and right now, we're starting with four, to see what we can do to better help them operate. And to do that, we need an outside source to look at, what I've, our eyes have been looking at for fifty years that we may not see. That's what this is for.
Okay, thank you, Councilman, I appreciate it.
Uh, another additional question, Ms. Mas, I see you at the council meeting. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance is held over sixty-four zero seventy. Rezone property located on the west side of Todd Acres Drive. From R.A. to I. one.
Move to layover one week.
Second.
And properly move in second, in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't layover for one week.
Zero one zero zero zero, zero zero one, ordinance to establish filing fees for land use, zoning, subdivision, and board of adjustment submissions.
So moved.
Are these a pair?
What?
Are, are these a pair before we get a second? Do they go together, zero one, zero one one, zero zero one, and zero nine, zero zero two?
Yeah.
Second.
Properly move in second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Zero nine zero zero two, ordinance to amend chapter nine of the Mobile City Code to add a new article entitled Board of Adjustment.
Motion to layover one week?
Second.
And properly move in second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't layover for one week.
Resolutions held over. Zero three zero zero nine, authorizes the certificate of mayor approval and resolution for appointment of directors of the Alabama School of Math and Science. Zero eight zero ten, approve purchase order to Global Industries for furniture for fire training center. Zero eight zero eleven, approve purchase order to Samsung Equipment for dump trailers for trash department. Zero eight zero twelve, approve purchase order to C.W. Government for surface pro tablets and accessories. Zero eight zero thirteen, approve purchase order to Arcadis for equipment and installation of vehicle detection equipment for ten intersections on Airport Boulevard. Zero eight zero fourteen, approve purchase order to Stunts for one-year subscription for workflow management software. Zero eight zero fifteen, approve purchase order to L.C.M. Motor Cars for Dodge Charger and a Chevrolet crew cab pickup truck for M.P.D. Cyber Division. Zero eight zero sixteen, approve purchase order to Celebrite for forensic product training for M.P.D. Twenty-one zero seventeen, authorize contract with Rico Science for new park signs at various city parks. Twenty-one zero eighteen, authorize change order with James H. Adams and Son Construction Company for Ann Street Rehabilitation Project. Twenty-one zero nineteen, authorize contract with Sawgrass Consulting. And was, um, in twenty-one zero twenty, authorizing contract with Southern Earth Sciences for twenty-twenty-two pagel resurfacing. Twenty-one zero twenty-one, authorize contract with Paris Contracting Services for new restrooms and renovations at Langin and Public Safety Memorial Parks. Twenty-one zero twenty-two, authorize contract with Minnican Resources to provide review and consultation of city boards and commissions. Twenty-one zero twenty-three, authorize contract with W.S., W.A.S. Design for Landscape Architectural Services for new pickleball courts at La Bretta Park. Twenty-one zero twenty-four, authorize contract with P.F.M. Group for a third-party validation study regarding altering the corporate limits of the city of Mobile. Thirty-seven zero twenty-five and zero twenty-six are approving a certificates of public convenience and necessity to Omsted Marjory Transit Service and to Baby B's Transportation to Operate Shuttle Service.
So moved.
Second?
And properly move in second in a discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Uh, gonna be Ms. Gregory then Mr. Reynolds.
Okay, thank you. On, um, Resolution twenty-one dash zero two-three, Mr. President, I would like it if Ms. Smith could come and explain what is going on with the pickleball courts, we have had a lot of interest in this, and I'd just like to make sure that the information gets out properly so that everybody knows exactly where we are.
Good morning again, um, thank you for having me come, 'cause I know William Carroll is getting a whole lot of emails as well, um, so this is summing it up for, um, everyone. One of the things we announced a year ago is that we had other pickleball courts that will be coming, um, there's, they're still coming, there's been some changes, um, as to making sure that when we come out with these, that they're not, um, half-done. So for La Bretta, Hillsdale, and Crawford Murphy, we are doing design, because at first what we were gonna just do is lay down courts, but knowing we need lights, knowing that, for example, Crawford Murphy, the infrastructure need to be redone, so we don't wanna do a patch job and then a year later gotta go back and redo the courts. Um, Hillsdale is a design, but again, those courts need to be redone, La Bretta is a whole new design, 'cause nothing is there. Uh, the other location was Seals, which is the easiest, which would be the first one that you see roll out, we're taking two of those tennis courts and converting them to four, um, but, um, Seals was recently done, so the courts are really up to, um, the, the foundation is really up to date, so that will be easy, we're just reconfiguring that space. All the other spaces, we're gonna have to redo the, um, asphalt underneath and then build, and rebuild, so that's what's gonna take time. So the four courts that will be coming is La Bretta, Hillsdale, Crawford Murphy, and Seals, with the first one being Seals being done. All the other ones, we're doing design, 'cause we're gonna add seating area, lights, um, and redoing the asphalt.
Uh, Ms. Smith, just for me focusing on La Bretta and Hillsdale, I know Hillsdale's is part of an entire package that we've got on the budget.
Yes.
So that includes, um, putting in the pickleball courts, as well as what else?
As well as redoing the inside of the community centers. What we're doing right now is going through updating LED lights, updating the, um, HVAC system, some areas, some, um, centers need, uh, new roofs, and then the other one is replacing the tile throughout the center.
So if they don't see specific pickleball, it is part of this entire package?
Yes.
And then at La Bretta, I know there are a lot of drainage issues out there, so the pickleball courts will also be a part of picking the drainage to make sure that we don't have those problems.
Yes, and La Bretta's a little bit bigger than that, 'cause it's providing parking, it's lights, it's the drainage issue that goes all the way down to the playground as well.
I think maybe for all of us, if we could get some of those specifics in writing so that we can share with our...
Definitely.
On our newsletters and share with our residents, especially everybody who has reached out to us about, asking about the pickleballs, I think they saw the design contracts and they were under the impression that we would very soon be moving forward with construction as well, so having to explain that, no, not quite yet, uh, we just need some help to make sure that all the correct information gets out.
No problem, I'll give that to you.
The, the other thing I would just say is, uh, by the end of the month, you should have the updated twenty-three to twenty-seven capital improvement plan book, and all, some of the details for some of those would be in there so that everyone will have that, so we'll get those copies to you as well.
Yeah, that'd be great, sure appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Reynolds?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. President, I'd like to offer an amendment to the contract of twenty-one dash zero two-two, uh, where the mayor and his office is stated in the contract, the contract shall repl- be replaced with the mayor and the city council. Um, the contract shall be amended to reflect six total entities to be reviewed, and these six boards are the History Museum, the LAD Board, Tree Commission, MAWS Board, Industrial Development Board, and Mobile Housing Board.
Second.
And properly move in second in a discussion.
So, Mr. President?
Mr. Jones?
So we will not take up the three-ten board with this?
Is that a question to me?
Yes, it's a question.
Uh, I, I would suggest that the three-ten board, we reserve that conversation for maybe a, a, a different wave, let's get this contractor in here, let's see how the, uh, the review goes, its usefulness, its effectiveness, and then once, uh, that's completed, maybe we'll have a better idea of how to, uh, attack the review that is desired for the three-ten board.
Mr. President, I think this is exactly the review that we want. In November, that board approved a five-point-fil- four-million-dollar contract to obtain a pediatric facility. They approved three acute mental homes to be... They approved three acute mental homes to be shut down and closed that housed nine patients. My colleague, Mr. Carroll, just said that we need to look at boards and how they function. This board is responsible for all mental health activities in this city. There's not a greater need that we have in this city outside of mental health. And this board is responsible for the strategic planning, oversight, and execution of all mental health services in this city. And what better use of a consultant to come in here and take a look at how that board is functioning and what we can do to get it where it should be than take it up with the first four?
Another discussion.
Uh, Mr. President, since I was mentioning that, um, all the boards that are being, uh, except for the mayor's request, uh, that are being, uh, reviewed came through the council's administrative services committee meeting and were suggested by the, all members of the council that were present at that time. Um, uh, in some ways, I agree somewhat with, uh, my colleague here that some other boards may need a governing process or review, but however, when those boards, boards fall outside of our privy or our, in, or, or the Enabling Act does not give us one hundred percent authority over that board, then I would see it somewhat questionable as to the full extent of any law we could place on that board when it comes to governance. I am aware that we have receipts on that board, I have, but however, there are also an additional, I mean, twenty-four or, uh, twenty-three seats on that board outside the city that we do not appoint.
Another discussion.
In, in response to that, the three seats that, that we appoint sit on the executive board that is responsible for all decisions, which is thirty percent an executive board. In addition, the city of Mobile has a preponderance of all the mental health issues this, that this board oversees. And what better board for a consultant to come in here and look at with state regis, state legislation, regulation, and figure out what right looks like when you have a complicated and complex organization like this and a board like this, but has oversight of so much that with regards to finances and authority over the mental health issues in this city? I just don't understand why this is not a consideration.
Another discussion. If not, all in favor, Mr. Reynolds, amendment?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Uh, Reynolds, amendment passed, going back to the, the original, you know, the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Pass.
Make a vote on all of those. That was on all, okay.
Did we vote on all of them? Was it on all of them or just?
She read, she read all of them, we were open.
Yeah, but I don't think we voted on all of them.
We just voted on that amendment.
It wasn't, it wasn't called out separately. That one was not called out separately.
Okay.
I, I'm willing to do what everyone else wants to do, I just, I'm just saying, it wasn't called out separately, so.
Right, so we, we took a vote on the entirety of the list.
Okay, all right.
Hmm. For the record, Mr. President, I'm a yes on everything but two-eight-zero-two-two, which I'm an eight for.
Ordinance is being introduced sixty-four zero-zero-three.
For council rules, these ordinances will layover for one week.
Consent resolutions being introduced thirty-one zero-twenty-eight through sixty zero-thirty-seven.
By council rules, we will, um, move to waive these, uh, resol, waive the rules in order to consider these resolutions.
Second.
They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules are waived.
We do have two exceptions.
Wait, wait, okay, um.
Forty.
So, two-nine and forty, zero-thirty-one. So I'll take those two separately. Okay.
Thirty-one zero-twenty-eight, authorized grant application to Aldott, uh, for fiscal year twenty-three rebuild Alabama Act annual grant program. Forty zero-thirty, declare the structure at one thousand three B Houston Street, public nuisance or demolished. Forty zero-thirty-two, thirty, and thirty-three are declaring the structures at fifty-sixty-four Range Line Road and seven-thirty Bankhead Place, public nuisances and ordering them demolished. Fifty-eight zero-thirty-four, assess cost removal, Weeds, Weetling Group, sixteen-thirty-two. Sixty zero-thirty-five and zero-thirty-six and thirty-seven are approving award a special bonus to the Public Services Employee of the Month, the Parks and Recreation Employee of the Month, and the Public Works Employee of the Month.
So move.
Second.
They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't pass.
Forty zero-two-nine, declare the structure at twenty-four eleven Noble C Beasley Avenue, a public nuisance in order to demolish.
Move to layover sixty days.
Second.
They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't layover for sixty days.
Forty zero-thirty-one, declare the structure at four oh four Denham Street, a public nuisance in order to demolish.
Motion to layover sixty days.
Second.
They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I don't layover for sixty days.
Resolutions being introduced zero-eight zero-thirty-eight through twenty-one zero-forty-three.
For council rules, these resolutions will be laid over for one week.
Announcements.
Uh, District Four, Councilman Reynolds?
No announcements.
District One, Councilman Penn?
Thank you, Mr. President. This, um, Saturday, we will have our citywide cleanup in all our districts. Um, mine will be held at Holloway Elementary School. Um, check-in time is eight-thirty, and then we will start our cleanup between nine and eight AM and eleven AM. So we're inviting everyone from District One to come out, um, and celebrate, um, M L K Service Day that day by helping clean in the community up. You are welcome to go in other areas of your community and bring that trash back to our, um, whole site, and that's Holloway Elementary School. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Penn. Uh, District Six, Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we'll be having a, a community meeting at the Connie Hudson Center Thursday night at six PM to discuss the development on Hillcrest Road. That'll go out in the newsletter as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Jones, District Two, Councilman Carroll?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. On, uh, this weekend and the day of service, uh, District Two will also be having a, a neighborhood cleanup. We will be in the Carver Homes neighborhood, or as we call it, the neighborhood behind the graveyard. We'll meet at the Church of Carver Homes that morning, and we'll dispense from that point. I ask everybody to be there about eight AM. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilman Carroll. District Five, Councilman Dave.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, District Five will also be participating in the, uh, in the day of service cleanup. We will be working on the ditch, uh, that is between the Walmart and the Cracker Barrel on the west I-sixty-five Service Road between Dauphin Street and Airport Boulevard. The meeting place will be, uh, in the parking lot of the Walmart on the west side of Walmart, and that's eight-thirty this Saturday morning. Um, the long-awaited, uh, widening project for South McGregor Avenue, uh, will start sometime in the next three months or so. This, uh, project will significantly impact travel throughout the city of Mobile. Uh, the, uh, project will proceed in three phases. The first phase will be the part between the bridge at the bottom of the hill and just south of the intersection of Dauphin Street and McGregor. Uh, and that's, that section will be completely rebuilt, there's gonna be new lines, but the bottom line is that section is gonna be completely closed to all traffic except for those people who actually live on that stretch of street. So this is obviously gonna significantly impact not only the people that live in that general area, but many, many residents who use that stretch. There are about eighteen thousand cars a day that grow, that go through that stretch of McGregor Avenue, people going from west to east or east to west. Uh, but, but if, if you're one of those folks that comes down Airport Boulevard in the morning and wanna go downtown to work and you're using Airport Boulevard to gain access to McGregor Avenue, you're not gonna be able to do that when this project starts, and you're probably not gonna be able to do that for two or three years, because that's how long the project's gonna last. So I'd ask you to start thinking about alternative routes now. Uh, and please, when you select an alternative route, don't pick a route that goes through the neighborhoods. Just go on down to I-sixty-five and get on the interstate and go over to Dauphin Street if that's what you wanted to. We will have a community meeting, um, for, on, uh, February seventh, Tuesday, February seventh, six o'clock PM at E.R. Dixon School on the corner of Bitten Spur Road and University Boulevard. This meeting is primarily for the people who live nearby in order to talk about traffic management, what streets are gonna be able to use, what streets are not gonna be able to use during the construction period. It, it's not really a general overview of the project, it's not generally really for folks that, like the ones I was just talking about, that are using that as a pass-through. It's, it's generally for the people in those neighborhoods right around, but it's a public meeting, anyone can come at six o'clock PM, February seventh, E.R. Dixon Elementary School. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Dave. Uh, District Seven, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just piggybacking on Mr. Dave's, uh, information about North McGregor, uh, the mayor had mentioned South McGregor, so two different sides of McGregor, Old Shell Road is right in between it. The South McGregor project, as the mayor mentioned, is getting started now, begins at the round, huh? I'm sorry, yes, north and south, it is South McGregor. North, it's North Mac, (laugh) North McGregor. Uh, going from the Roundabout to Stein is really the first phase of it, so that will be closed. The rest of the project going from the Roundabout to Old Shell Road will be the longest and most disruptive portion of this project. I want to thank Nick Amberger and his staff for going out and working with the business owners to help them find another avenue or way to get into their businesses. Thanks also to the Rouseford Shopping Center for allowing parking there and a drive-through to get to some of the businesses that will make it easier for the customers to still be able to get into the businesses. As the mayor said, we want to make sure that everyone knows all of these businesses up and down McGregor are open for business. Local traffic will be able to get in, residents shouldn't have any difficulties getting to their homes. But again, we want to make sure that everyone understands businesses there will be open, and the city is working diligently to make sure that there is a way for people to park and get to these businesses. And so just thank you, everyone, for the work that you have been doing already. Uh, residents will also be getting some postcards in the mail to remind them about this work. The initial part from the Roundabout to Stein Street will take about a month, and then the rest of the project will begin, so hopefully those postcards will get in the mail to mailboxes very soon. Also, just want to, um, bring to your mind the resolution that we passed regarding Langen Park. This is a project for the amphitheater, something that has been long-awaited. We are renovating and updating the amphitheater at Langen Park and building new restrooms. This is part of a much greater, uh, overall project that we are doing to transform Langen Park. I'm really excited about seeing this getting started. And coming on the heels of this will be a twelve-mile stabilization project that also has been in the works. It impacts not only my district, but also, uh, Councilman Jones's district. More information will be coming up about that. But for our district in Langen Park, it means it is the beginning of getting to dredge Langen Lake. That is something that I've been talking about for years, the need to dredge Langen Lake. It is part of our overall transformation project, and this bank stabilization is the first step. So I am really looking forward to that. And like my colleagues, we will also be participating in the day of service this coming Saturday. We'll be checking it at eight-thirty at the V O A Building, which is at the corner of Sigler Boulevard and Athie Road. So I just invite everyone to please come out and join us. We'll be there, rain or shine. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gregory, and to the citizens of District Three, just a reminder on this evening, very busy evening, at five o'clock PM, the O'Dell Community Action, um, group will be meeting at Smalls on Broad Street. Uh, at five o'clock PM, this is our annual monthly meeting, inviting all the residents of the O'Dell Community to please come out at five o'clock PM and participate in our meeting. And also at six-thirty PM, uh, we will be meeting at the, uh, first precinct on Dolphin and the Parkway, the Riverside, uh, Community Action Group. Again, inviting all the citizens in the South D I P area to come out this evening at six-thirty PM. Uh, we will have some special guests, uh, this evening at the Riverside Community Action Group. Uh, actually, we will have some students from B.C. Rain that will be there this evening. Again, inviting all the citizens in the South D I P area to come out this evening at six-thirty, uh, PM. Also, on this coming Saturday, as my other colleagues have suggested, uh, the day of services, uh, will be held at, uh, Matinelli Park. Um, registration is, it will be at eight-thirty AM. Uh, the address of Matinelli Park is forty-three eighty, uh, Park Road. Uh, this is going to also be in conjunction, uh, with the, uh, Peninsula, uh, D I P Peninsula. Uh, inviting all the citizens of D I P to please come out on this coming Saturday at eight-thirty AM, and also on this coming Monday at twelve noon, uh, looking into also March of, uh, Mobile, United Advanced Dream, and the annual M L K March. Is anything else from this council? Anything from administration?
Motion to adjourn.
They're properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?